Let's go ahead and call a meeting to order this September the 20th, 2012. A regular council meeting. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and the night standing for the occasion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the beautiful weather, the fall weather that you've given us here, the rain that you gave us earlier this week, which we need so desperately. We also ask that you be with each one that's here tonight, our families, and those who are unable to attend. Give a special gift to those who have lost loved ones across the waters this week and be with our country. Just be with us throughout the remainder of all of our days, all these things you pray, your name on the air.
I'd like to welcome our guests from the district here tonight. Would like to introduce someone to you here that many of you know, the Cherokee County Volunteer Aging Council has been doing some fundraising and that was the reason for the hat that you saw out front a few weeks ago, raising money to each mayor was in somewhat competition to see who could raise the most money there. Also, one of the items that they utilized for raising money was to let people bid on being mayor for a day. So, I'm proud here to have Mr. Charles Simon, who is with Edward Jones, and he actually paid good money to do this today. So, most of today, since at least since 1:00, he has been with me here and we've shown him around and he's listened to some phone conversations and so forth, so I don't know, I think he's had a pretty good day, a pretty busy day of it, so I wanted him to be here for this meeting and so hopefully he'll come back and visit with us. I will entertain a motion at this time to consider the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to add to the agenda under Old Business, it'd be an update on the Fire Service Protection Improvement Plan. If we can do that, I appreciate it.
Okay. And we have, I guess we need a motion to amend, are there other items that need to be amended? Okay. I guess we would have a motion to do that?
Uh-huh.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, those in favor signify by saying aye? Those no? Okay. Under, did you say under Old Business or Council?
Old.
Old Business, yeah, okay. Under Old Business. Any, let's see, the next item, we will have the 10-minute public input period, Mr. Andy Bonner?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Before we have that, I'm not going to stay any longer.
Sure.
Thank you, appreciate that. I feel, I know that the council feels that the public input is very important. We appreciate the citizens coming in with their comments and input, but it seems of late, we have lacked the decorum that is required for the council that we live by and the public input. And for a couple of examples, what I'd like to point out is, some weeks back, we had an individual come forward in reference to Heritage Park silhouettes being put on the sidewalk that our city manager jumped the gun. Matter of fact, he did not jump the gun, he was acting on the head nod of the council and we voted on it the following council meeting. But it was not jumping the gun and there was no need to come in and attack an individual for doing what the council had asked for. Secondly, we've had great input from the fire district issue about the citizens coming in, talking to us about the fire questions, and I think it was appropriate and I have no problem with all the input that we did receive. I have a problem with, and I'm sure council does also, that during that input, there was a lot of cheering going on when they were making their points. That's out of order. Also, when council was trying to speak, we had catcalls, boos, discussions and grumbling going on, again, out of order. The latest episode was probably the most disgraceful that we've ever experienced here in this council, and that was an individual came in, last council meeting, he attacked the council along with the city manager. His behavior was threatening, he was pointing fingers, he escalated his concerns, his demands, and then he turned around and escalated again. We got the point, we knew what he was talking about, but we did not need to have the higher level of the comments, the finger pointing. I became concerned that we might have somebody rush forward and do something that would be totally uncalled for. The behavior was well beyond the exceptional level and should have been stopped by the mayor. Under the section, the city code, section 2-52D, decorum, members of the public shall not make inappropriate or offensive comments at city council meetings and are expected to comply with the rules of decorum that are established for council members. Individuals who violate any rules, the city council may be ruled out of order by the mayor. I wish that happened. But, also it says, "or on a point of order made by council members." And I hope that we would have no more outbursts, no more threats and no more attacks on this council. We're here to serve the public, we deserve the respect of that, and they can bring their issues forward, I have absolutely no problem, comments from anybody, but I will not sit here and accept that sort of battering or anything else. Thank you, I appreciate your input.
Thank you, Mr. Beresford.
Mayor, we need an approval of the agenda.
Oh, did we not vote on that?
We voted on Mr. Beresford's motion.
Okay, so we didn't combine those, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment? I thought we approved that amendment to the agenda.
I don't think we approved the agenda, I'm not sure that we're...
Some of them.
Okay. Second, okay. Those in favor? Opposed? Okay, under 10-minute public input, Mr. Bonner?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Andy Bonner and I'm a Canton resident. I'm here tonight to speak regarding the proposed garbage fee increase from $7.50 to $11 on seniors in the DeSable, which amounts to a 47% increase. According to our article in the Cherokee Tribune dated Saturday, September the 15th, City of Woodstock is going to reduce their monthly garbage rate from $13.72 to $9.40 for a savings of $4.32 per month, which amounts to a 46% decrease. City of Woodstock has gone with Waste Management, the same company that Canton uses. I would ask why Canton is increasing their rates while Woodstock just announced their plans to lower their rates while using the same company as Canton? I'm asking the council to please use this information or take it into consideration before voting to increase our senior garbage rates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Carol Day?
My name is Carol Day, thank you for hearing me. I'm not as up to date on some of this stuff, I've been out of town a little bit, but I don't miss many of your meetings. I have been dismayed to see some of the interaction that goes on at the meetings. I really thought, as the council has worked together, and I know they put in a lot of time and they don't get paid anything that resembles what their efforts are, but I'm hoping in the future to see more cooperative interaction as well as more listening and taking into consideration each other's views on things, the background information that you gather, and then glean from that what's most appropriate for our citizens. I'd also like to take exception on the garbage fees. I agree with Mr. Bonner. Obviously, we must have something wrong that we have to increase ours when the other communities can bring it down. We also do not need to put further burden on our senior citizens. I think the people you see coming to your meetings are seniors that probably for the most part are all qualified to pay upfront what the costs are, but the people who do really need to be considered are tied, are buried enough with their own issues that they don't have the opportunity or the access to come to these meetings and make their opinions known, and they're not comfortable speaking up and doing so. And that's, they're not to be faulted for that. I would just appreciate seeing a more, I can't think of the word for it, but amiable interaction between the people who work together here in the best interest of the citizens that you represent. And I'd also like to give accolades for the fire service that we have and how much out of their way that those people go to provide a service for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, under the consent agenda, items to consider for approval, the approval of September the 6th, 2012 minutes, approval of a resolution to abandon Cochran Road, and approval of the name change from Commerce Boulevard to Northside Cherokee Boulevard. Are any of those that need to be removed from that consent agenda for further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sir?
That motion is second to approve. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion? Under Old Business, discussion and possible action on solicitation of bids for the SCADA system.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Rush?
I think we discussed, at the work session, we gave staff more or less a head nod to go ahead, so I think it's just the formality here, then I'll make the motion to approve that we solicit bids for the SCADA system.
Okay. We have motion and a second to approve the bids for the SCADA system? Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion? Discussion and possible action on solicitation of bids for the reservoir office? Mr. Rush?
Ditto.
Okay? We have a second to ditto. It will have a second, a second, okay. Have a motion and a second to proceed with solicitation of bids for the reservoir office? Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion? Discussion of the license, business license fee? Basically, that was something I had put on and mentioned to the council at the last meeting regarding the rate increase that we put into effect by adding an administrative fee on our business license a few weeks ago. What that does is actually jacks the amount of, for those, the one person and small businesses a little bit to the point that the minimum for the City of Canton is actually higher, I mean, that's maybe what you want to do than Ball Ground, Woodstock, Holly Springs, Cherokee County, Sandy Springs, Kennesaw, Smyrna and Alpharetta. I mean, I don't know if you want to take a look at that or, yes, sir?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I looked at it as you requested and I tend to agree with, I think, where you're going, that what we're doing, pushing it up too high for a small business and I personally, having been in a small business, think that based on gross revenue is inequitable, at least when you look at the surrounding communities. I think we should change our fee to be similar to that of Holly Springs and Woodstock based on the...
Number of employees.
Number of employees, correct.
All right.
Got a motion?
What I would...
No? Discussion?
Discussion right now? Yeah, I think we would actually need to discuss that. Why don't we, why don't we put that on the agenda for the work session and discuss it further at that point? Everybody, if you still have your attachment from the last meeting, or the handout, I guess it was at that point, that showing the comparison there, then we can also look, maybe we can ask the clerk to get some of the examples of the other cities who are using the number of employees and how they actually do it, so for the next meeting. Okay. Discussion of senior citizen and permanently disabled garbage rates?
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we leave the rates as they are?
Good deal. We have a motion and a second. And we leave the rates as they are? Any other discussion? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One of the reasons, I agree with the motion and, but my agreement is perhaps a little different. I have always been an advocate that we shouldn't subsidize anyone because although we are making money from the waste collection, the people who are non-seniors are paying more than they should to subsidize what we're losing for the seniors. But because of where we may be going with the fire fee and all, and the fact like Mr. Bonner pointed out about Woodstock, we're stuck in a four-year contract with Waste Management, so we can't really do much about the rates right now, I don't think. But I don't think as a city, if we're providing a service, we should make any money on the fees, and I really think that, and Woodstock I believe is having Waste Management bill the people, I don't see any reason why, if we can somehow switch our system so that let the, let the company that's collecting bill the people. One of the reasons, it might, I don't even know if they do it anymore, but when I first moved in here, part of the HOA dues were for trash collection, but then they later found out that the city wouldn't allow that, so that they wanted to collect, so they deducted, I think, $7.50 from our HOA dues. But I think that, you know, we really don't need to make money off trash collection since we don't do anything except bill. So if we can divest ourselves of that function, I think it'd be good for everybody.
Mr. Cadiz?
I concur with Mr. Rush on that it's not a good time to raise it on seniors, but I gave a little different thought about it initially. When I looked at it and I saw what we were paying, I was sort of in favor of not subsidizing, but then I started to think, the rates that we're charging are flawed anyway, so we're really not subsidizing, and I thought about, when I take my garbage can out, which is pretty large and it's only half full, maybe we're not really subsidizing the seniors that we are actually providing them too large a can, and I think at the time, the time that we go to look at this contract in two years, that we have a tiered system that, and maybe look at one size can at one tiered rate and another size can at a different rate, the one, some of the seniors have mentioned to me that the cumbersomeness of this big can and the space that it takes up in the smaller dwellings, they might be better served to have a smaller can, and so I too have changed my mind about being for any increase.
Mr. Beresford? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you. I would like to suggest, if I could, that we'd have Mr. Rush look in with Waste Management, I'd be more than happy to work with you on that, and contact them. I know we do have a contract, but also I think it might be fair to investigate, see if we can get different can sizes, as pointed out, and if we can, we aren't changing a vendor, we're just trying to modify, and I'd like to see if we can do that, so I would ask that if it's okay if he would look into that.
Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion on the table, I believe that basically, that we, I guess we don't even need to vote on this, we're leaving it the same, right? There's no need, there's no need to vote on that, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think I would like to have a vote.
Oh, you'd like to vote anyway?
To say that we, in the minutes of the meeting, that we officially...
Okay, we can vote, that's fine, we just, of course we want to change outcome, but that's fine. Those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? Okay, all members voting for the motion? Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding restructuring the city's long-term debt? You gonna handle that or let it go?
I would only say that we are continuing to explore options and opportunities. I had hoped to be able to make a recommendation to council tonight, I'm not really in that position as we speak, so I'd ask that that ought to be carried over for consideration in a future meeting.
Okay, so we will move that to, I guess, our work session, if you want it on that one? Okay, on October the 4th? Okay. Our fire district plan, Mr. Beresford?
Well, I'm not chairman of the group, I was just one of the...
I thought you, I thought you were heading this over.
Yes, I did.
So, okay, what, are you asking for an update?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Cadiz?
Well, we've had one meeting, we've discussed four different things, what we're gonna do, when we're gonna do it, how much it was anticipated to cost, and method of funding. The first three were pretty much identified as to what, when, and an estimated cost, and we sort of got hung up on the fourth one was the method of funding, fee versus taxes, and Mr. Beresford said he was going to work on a fee-based idea as a consultant to the committee. I was trying to schedule another meeting for next week on Thursday, but Mr. Beresford required a little bit more time, I think, to work this out, and the meeting was adjourned with Mr. Beresford saying that he would notify me as chairman as to when he could come forward with a fee-based approach for discussion. Okay, that's pretty much a recap of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I would like to say that I'm excited, the fact that I think we have reached a point, and I'd like to pass around, as I had done at the last meeting, the fee question, and it will be a fee, and I would like to be able to put this on the agenda for our work session at the next council meeting and vote for it at our regular voting meeting. The numbers came in and they came in a lot better than anticipated, and basically right now, and I hated to give out a number until we were pretty doggone close, but it looks like we're looking at about $5.17 a month that would be charged for this service, and it would be in a modeled after the stormwater impervious units base that will generate the revenue we need. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Rush, Mr. Goodwin, Mr. Huckman and Mr. Bryan on feedback and input on this, working out the details for this project, and I would like for you to look at these so that when we come into the work session, we can be able to say, here's where we're at, but we're still getting that final plan. Modeling of the stormwater is probably the most equitable for everybody and it stays, it's very simple, very clean, and to tumble the number, we're talking in essence for seniors, we'll probably have to pay $62.04 a year for this service. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm assuming you want this on the next work, October 4th work session?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Mr. Cadiz?
Isn't normal protocol to bring it to the committee? Mr. Beresford must have stayed up every night in order to generate this because he didn't have available at the committee meeting and didn't anticipate it being available until November, but I would think normal protocol would be to bring this to a committee meeting and I'll call a committee meeting and Mr. Beresford, if he doesn't have any objections, could present this in detail to the committee and then bring it to the work session.
Okay, thank you. Sounds good. All right, under New Business, discussion and possible action on Atkins' contract amendment. This is a contract amendment, I have already signed this, but I would like you to vote anyway, I mean, it seemed like timeless with the essence on this, and basically it's a $1,500 contract that they needed, Joby needed, you know, for the preparation of certain record drawings. If anyone has any questions, I'll ask Joby to come up, otherwise I would appreciate a motion to approve this contract.
Motion, good.
I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, you will go ahead and make a motion, come in, you will discuss it then.
No, he's, you got a motion in a second, if you want to take a bullet, I want to mention something else regarding that Atkins contract though.
Oh, regarding this one or something other?
Same project.
Oh, okay, okay. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye? Okay, all members voting for this, which would have something regarding the same contract?
Same, same project at least, and that is, my email, I meant mailed everybody, sent to everybody, I think a couple of days ago. everybody, I think, a couple days ago, regarding the retaining wall. If we're going to build that retaining wall, now's the time to amend that contract to achieve that purpose. If we're not, that's fine, we charge on. But Dave and Jimmy's been able to locate some bricks, and I think Mr. Huffman was in a meeting at which some of that was discussed. I hope adequately described what we were talking about in the emails, everybody knows what, where we're talking about. But bottom line is, we need to see a thumbs up or thumbs down on that wall, because it would need to be built pretty quickly.
Yes, sir.
One question is, the landscaping will be done in the center item?
Yes, sir.
The bricks will blend with that brick?
That's my understanding, yes, sir. That's Joby, Mr. Huffman, you were in that discussion.
Yeah, what we discussed was, there's always the possibility of being just a shade off on the color of one brick versus another brick, so I think you're gonna use the brick that we found, say, on the monument that's out front, it will be a separate piece, so if there's a slight shade difference, it will be separated from having a wall that looks, and then all of a sudden, you got a different color.
Right away. Yep. Are you asking for a motion to approve the expenditure?
If the mayor would consider that appropriate, if that's, you decide that's-
Well, and basically, we need a thumbs up or thumbs down, so we can tell Joby to proceed with-
I prefer the thumbs up, thumbs down deal, because, you know, I think then we can vote on it at proper time.
We'll bring the contract back.
Anybody have any problems?
Sure.
Okay, then, unfortunately, we will proceed with that.
Mr. Mayor? I think that's something we should do, push a head nod.
I like that.
I think the thumbs up, I think it's harder than just kind of the nod.
One of the points on that project is, I've also asked Joby to look at, if you look just to the east of the fire station, that little short cut through, I don't know if that's an alleyway or a dedicated street, but either case, it's our property. Dave and Jimmy can rebuild those sidewalks and has agreed to do that, but we need to look while all that paving is going on around there. If you look at that surface, it's intolerably rough, and I think that's a relatively inconsequential amount of money within context of the project, so I've asked Joby to look at that as well.
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Mr. Wood? Have they been able to determine or get a better estimate on the cost of building that additional wall? I mean, I know what we came up with at the meeting, but I don't know if any of the work has been done.
No, sir, I don't think it has. I think we were waiting on the, counting the thumbs tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Wood? You got it? That's it, that's all you have? That's all I have on that. Yeah, manager report. Yes, sir, I've got a number of issues we can cover real quickly. Just in the way of some reports. Mr. Ken Jimmy informed me that he's been bartered with folks interested in vaults since he placed that vault, the reservoir out at the South East Cemetery. The directions to South East Cemetery on the website, and apparently, that's gone over pretty, a lot of popularity, but if our friends in the media can be sure and help get that message out, if people will access the website, they're free to avail themselves of that vault just out there. Construction of the reservoir, construction of the public access area, as you know, has been on hold pending approval of some soil and erosion control plans, and Joby West is working on those as we speak, and we hope to get that approval as soon as we can. Atlanta Gaslight has completed the installation of the gas line for that emergency generator. The reservoir office building, we've got a meeting with Mark Robillard on September 26th to fine tune those planes and be able to go to bid on those as you formally authorize tonight, and then bids will hopefully be received on the SCADA system on October 5th. InfraTech is continuing to work on the design of the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and improvements. The 30% design drawings were submitted to the city on September 10th, and those are currently under review. Some of you will be happy to know that the utility partners has installed a deodorizing system at their headworks, have had it operation over the past weekend, they're fine tuning the strength and the dosage of that, of the deodorizing liquid, hopefully that will be helpful, as you know, odor problems seem to come and go, but hopefully, that will be helpful, particularly with respect to River Fest coming up. Community Development is continuing to work on the Unified Development Code, they have submitted the closeout paperwork for our GFA grant, and have also submitted an additional proposal from, for cheaper, from some additional funding on some solar array panels. CBVG, we're waiting notification from Cherokee County of the award amount on that. You would be interested in knowing, the big room, try to get away from first, do it as a sanctuary sooner or later, but the big room that we all want to be able to relocate to as soon as we can. That bid opening for that ceiling work is on October 17th, and so we'll bring you hopefully a contract recommendation back on that. That'll be ceiling work and some, anything that requires scaffolding, some painting work as well, and then there'll still be a considerable amount of AV work and probably some stage reconstruction and some other things. We're working on the State Route 140 low fire flow issue that you're aware of, Lower Scott Mill, and then also a connection at Univetta Road with Cherokee County that will help our fire flow and pressures. The extension, as you may know, the extension of Northside Cherokee Drive is underway. You can really see it from 140, if you go out 140, you can see a lot of construction activity out there. We've completed construction on the revision to the Simber Pond Outfall, and continuing to work at the hospital on the West Lakeview tank. The new launch at Brown Industrial Park, Mr. West is hopeful to obtain permission by the end of this month from EPD on that, and hopefully, we can begin construction work on that. I know some of you have a particular interest in that during October, so we need to get that completed before November for some environmental reasons relative to winter. The water line replacements over here with Luska and North Main are completed, continuing to work on the landfill closure. I know that's outside and out of mind, but we still got to complete that landfill closure, so we'll probably be coming back to you with some alternate information on that in the very near future. We've got a paint recycling event Camille has asked me to announce on October 20th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Apparently, that was fairly successful in the past, and then she in particular has also been working on a grease recycling program, household and commercial grease through a Georgia Recycling Coalition program. Our tax sale on September the 5th went well. We actually had three parcels sold, which is pretty good considering that we had 550 on that original list. We have hired, Mr. Ingram has hired a new accounting technician, her name is Linda Petty, she has an accounting degree from North Georgia College, she has 20 years of military experience and then 10 years of experience in the private sector. So I bet her, believe she's gonna be an asset to the finance department team, and looking forward as her being here on October 1. The finance department is already working as we speak, I interrupted Nathan today, he was immersed in that on the FY 12 audit, and will be immersed in that over the next two or three months. And we have collected our first SPOLOX 6 money, and that was in the amount of $245,353, which is high compared to what those collections have been in the past. Some of them have been averaging 180 to 200 range, so we welcome that collection forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I asked Mr. Wood about the launch for the reservoir. We still don't have the drawing ready to submit to EPD.
Mr. West is working on those, I believe, as recently as today, is that right, Mr. West? You want to speak to that, please?
That is correct. We don't foresee any EPD permitting, it will be through the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission Office over in Cherokee County.
I mean, you got a lot of things going, obviously, from your report, and I know you need another engineer, which I understand you're working on that as well. I just, I mean, I hope we can get that done so we can get that facility open.
You have any estimate of timeframe, Joby, on that?
I should have a plan over Mr. Joe's vision probably sometime next week, I'll have it.
Thank you. How long you think he'll take to review?
Not long. Not long. We'll just try to pressure him.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks.
Anything else? Now, I would like to add a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss possible litigation, personnel, and property acquisition. Okay. Those in favor signify the same eye. It is not, will not, at this point, as far as I know, there will not be coming back out to take action on any of these items to be discussed.
I remember when you said to the council before, I had to go.